Free. Sorry, I'll start that again. Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Tom Water City Council Work Session and we will be having a few more council members joining. So with that, I will, as soon as the other council members join, I will then do roll call. So Lisa, do you mind starting off? Are we doing for the Puget Sound Energy Storm Readiness Presentation?
Yes, we have Christine Rumpa here. She's the local government liaison with the Puget Sound Energy and I can, Christine, I believe you have, do you have your PowerPoint available?
I do, ready to go.
Awesome. So Mayor, whenever you're ready, we can go ahead and have her start doing that.
Okay, you go right ahead.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Let me share my screen. Are we good?
Not seeing anything yet.
Okay. Oh, let me hit the share button. That might help. Well, that.
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Hello, everyone. My name is Christine Rumpa, as Mrs. Park said. Senior Local Government Affairs Rep for Puget Sound Energy. I've been in the position for about a year now, a little over a year. And I am also a Tom Water resident. So it had been since two thousand eight, love city Tom Water. So this is my second storm presentation, and if you've got questions that I can't answer, please know that I will be happy to answer, get back to you after the fact with those. All right. So here's the agenda. We're going to do a safety moment. At PSC, we start all of our meetings with the safety moment if you in the meeting. So we'll do one of those. Then we'll talk about storm preparedness from PSC's perspective, how we respond to storms, how we restore power, et cetera. Then I'll share some information and tips for storm preparedness for our customers. So here's our safety moment for the evening. It's all about downed power lines. So if you see a downed utility wire of any kind, please assume it's energized and immediately call nine one one or PST to report that incident. If the line is laying across the road, stay in your car and don't drive over the power line. Sometimes people assume that the power line is a communication line. It can be really hard to tell the difference. So we always assume that it's energized and definitely let someone know so we can come out and assist. If for some reason you have to exit your car, jump away and land with both feet together and shuffle away to safety. So that is a safety moment. Storm Preparedness. So this slide lists some of the things that PS works, PSE works on year round to prepare for storm season. As the slide shows, you can see our service territory has about twenty-six thousand plus miles of electric lines that we maintain. We do this by doing a couple of different things year round. The main thing that we do is vegetation management. I'm sure all of us have been stopped by flaggers on the road. And you can see the folks, the asplund trucks that are cutting limbs back and removing any hazards. In my neighborhood this year, we had a big wasp nest on the bottom of one of the transformer, gray transformer boxes that the folks had to contend with. So not always a safe job or a fun job, but definitely necessary to keep the power going. It's critical to PSC in storm season. But we also replace poles and in some harder areas, we install what's called tree wire. It's conducted cover wire and it reduces the shorting out that happens when a tree or tree limbs fall on the lines. We did some of that work in the county out by Offutt Lake this summer. We also do what's called targeted reliability projects like cable remediation and undergrounding. Cable remediation is basically just replacing old cables and wires at the end of their productive life. Another activity that we do consists of adding what's called distribution automation. We used to have to have crews go out and manually switch or reduce or reclose was the term that they have downed lines. But having distributed automation allows our system operation people to remotely reroute the electricity along other paths if the line is down. The term scatter that you see on the screen there just stands for supervisory control and data acquisition. It's not exclusive to the utility industry. It's just a control system made up of computers, networked data communications and user interfaces. And it's used to stop and reroute power on just from our folks in Bellevue. The folks in Bellevue can do that. And the final bullet point on this screen talks about AMI meters. So AMI or Advanced Metering Infrastructure, we did a lot of upgrades up and down our ten counties. We're done with replacing all the AM, the old meters with new AMI meters here in Thurston County. We moved, we removed all the old meters which are called AMR meters, automated meter, meter reading meters, a lot of meter words there, blah. And we replaced them all with AMI meters, which is the current industry standard. So we're working on storm preparedness year round. So readiness for storms is not, it doesn't just involve tangible equipment. And this slide talks a little bit about our storm team or our staff. For those who don't know, PSC is Washington's oldest and largest energy utility. We have a six thousand square miles service territory across ten counties. We serve over one point two million electric customers. And Thurston County has our second highest number of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven electric customers. So storms and power outages are all hands on deck situation for the company, as you can imagine. We have nine hundred plus employees at PSC with emergency response roles. So in reality, about a third of the company, company's total employees are part of getting the power back on quickly and safely for our customers. During a storm event, we deploy what we create storm bases. And we have also, it's called emergency coordination centers. And ECC opens when power outages reach a threshold beyond what the company can normally manage under normal operating procedures. And these are typically caused by significant weather events, namely windstorms. You see, emergency coordination centers provide oversight and direction for the entire response effort. And when an ECC opens up in the area, you'll hear directly from me. So PSC typically restores infrastructure and facilities so that the greatest number of customers are back in service in the least amount of time. And this slide shows the system prioritization. Transmission systems come first because they provide power on the regional level. They're, they're also how we get power from what's called our critical generation assets like dams, power plants and wind farms. And downed transmission lines can also affect other utilities. Then we put bring substations up next. When a substation faces an outage, it affects thousands of customers at a time. So they come next. And then finally, we'll look at our distribution systems. They're third in line. And these, these are the power lines that come out of the substations and deliver power to homes and businesses. So with all of that said, though, we do have other factors that come into play when we prioritize the restoration process. Our emergency response coordination teams maintain lists of all the critical infrastructure by service territory. So this includes hospitals, airports, water and water waste treatment plants, sewage pumping stations, emergency shelters and emergency response facilities. It also includes facilities for which people can't easily be relocated, like nursing homes, assisted living facilities, et cetera. So these are some things that we would really like our customers to know. So these are on the screen, you can see three different kinds of trucks that they may see in their neighborhood. But it's important to note that restoration is a very physical, time consuming process. And a lot of things need to happen in the field to get the lights back on. First, we send out damage assessment teams and it can take some time to find downed lines, especially in remote areas. Next, we dispatch the appropriate crews. We might need a tree crew out there before we actually send our line crews out to work on the lines. So those go out next. The crews make the needed repairs. And then lastly, we do a final inspection and safety check before turning the power back on. So oftentimes, we understand our customers are not very happy when the power goes out. But we really appreciate their patience. We do get a lot of kudos and support from our customers. So that's always a great thing. So this I did not know until I started working for PSC. For most outages, we do not know when an outage occurs unless we get notified by our customers. So all of our transmission lines and substations, they are monitored from our central office and we know if those go out or if they're offline. However, the local distribution lines are not monitored from a central office. So we would really, really love it if our customers let us know. They can do that through our website or app where they can give us a call. And if you don't have your power back in a couple hours, please do call us back so that we can take a look at what's going on. So here are some of the ways that we communicate with our customers. We monitor, the company as a whole monitors the National Weather Service advisories. And I'm pretty sure that you good folks have received some weather advisories from me last year during storm season. We try to provide some safety tips in those emails as well. And I, we do hope that your leadership team finds some helpful. My favorite tool to use is the outage map, which you see on your screen right there. That's on our website and it's also available on the mobile app. We provide text alerts when power is restored. And we share regular updates and pictures on our social media channels too. A lot of people are using Instagram. So we are on Instagram as well. One thing to note on the slide is in the bottom, almost to the very bottom right hand corner is what's called the estimated restoration time. We'll typically post a very conservative estimate at first and then update it as we get more information from our folks out in the field and see what kind of damage has really been done, what kind of repair requirements are needed. So that number, that ETR can fluctuate quite frequently. So one nice feature about the mobile app and the website is that you can sign up to get notifications. This little blue line here notify me about this outage. This way you can know whether or not you need to stay at that restaurant and have another cup of coffee or if you need to go home and sit in the dark. So you can always sign up for those if your power is out. So be prepared. That's, that's our, our big message for our customers. And so we always recommend folks have two sets of emergency supplies, one for the home and one for their car. Supplies include the basics, flashlights, extra batteries, non-perishable food, first aid kits, water stoves and some cash. Having a battery powered radio is a good idea, gives you good weather updates. And they also have now these little chargers for your phone that you can keep charged. If you know a storm is coming, charge them up. Then if your phone does lose power, you'll be able to recharge it in case you do need to call an emergency number for some reason. So make sure to include enough supplies for you and your family for at least three days. Don't forget your pets. And we have so much information on our website. Our website is a really good resource for our customers to take a look at. Tons of stuff in, out there about storm preparedness, safety. We really encourage our, our customers to take a look at our website. And that's what this slide says as well. Tons of information out there. I watched some really neat videos that we have about what to do if you do encounter a downed electric line. So we just really want to encourage all of our customers to head out to that website and take a look. This slide, I just thought I'd put some interesting little tidbits of information on it. We've got about thirteen hundred miles of pipes and overhead wire in Thurston County. And also have nineteen hundred miles of underground, very expensive.
Christine, I think is freezing up for a second. So Lisa, do you want to step in while Lisa, while Christine is frozen?
Well, I am certainly able to, I, I, I'm not able to complete her presentation for her. We can perhaps see if, oh, did she drop off?
Yeah, it looks like she dropped off completely, so.
Okay. So I would suggest we said perhaps move along and let her finish when, if she's able to get back in or we could just wait for a moment.
Okay. So I guess I'll start with any questions on anything that we might want to put in the queue for when she gets back. Yes, Councilor Doppa.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the questions is a constituent who read the packet had a question regarding undergrounding. And I know Christine had that slide about undergrounding power lines. What is that?
Oh, there she is. Yeah, there you go. We lost you for a minute. Oh, there, she's not completely connected here. We, we lost you for a minute.
So sorry. I don't know what happened. I don't even have anything open. I was almost done anyway. So yeah, I was just had little tidbits of information for you about some fun little facts. And then that was really the presentation. So do you guys have any questions for me? Anything you would like to, to share or, or want me to find for you or try to answer?
Yeah, Councilor Rudolph was just starting to ask a question. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Christine. Nice to see you. So we had a constituent read the packet and wanted to have us ask a question. I said I'd be happy to. So regarding your slide of undergrounding power lines, right, with power outages and prepping for those storms, is there, how do you work with jurisdictions, right? So like, how does that look like in Tom Water? Do you have like a hierarchy? Could you talk about more about undergrounding and what that looks like for Tom Water in areas of Tom Water when we're developing our new housing? How does that all play out in that big puzzle piece?
So for right now, if you're building a new neighborhood, anything kind of new construction, we will automatically underground the distribution lines. And so that's just part of our normal protocol. Transmission lines that they're usually already existing, that costs a lot of money to underground them. And if we're, there's really not, I don't want to say a good reason or if there, there are other factors that come into play. And if, if there aren't great factors, the city and town have to pay for that undergrounding completely. It's very expensive. I've got some really good handouts on undergrounding transmission and distribution that I will share with you so you can share with your constituent. But we do look at the number of outages in an area, right? So we'll watch those. And if we find that we have a repeated area where we've got distribution lines that are, or, or transmission lines that are going out, now, 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 we try to prioritize those to get them undergrounded as part of our capital projects. So we are watching those. But what, what I'm curious about is how we do work directly in the Tom Water area. I think probably our municipal liaison manager works very closely with your public works director to work on those kind of things. But we do underground the distribution lines.
She froze again. That was a really good answer.
Yeah.
She, oh, PSC.
Councilwoman Cathy, did you have a question and then we could? Now we can see if she, okay. Any other questions that we can put in the queue for her? All right. So since she was at the end, if we have any additional questions, I think we can ask. So with that, I think we will move to the next item, which is the emergency management update and Chief Brian Hurley will be presenting.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, kind of fitting with the theme tonight. We'll continue on, you know, it fits right in with, with what we're going to talk about next as far as city emergency management activities. And I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. And let me see here. How are we doing there?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, tonight I just want to talk a little bit about, and really what we'll talk about is the, kind of the national response framework, some discussion of our city emergency management activities, touch on what the county does, and then kind of wrap it up with a reminder of elected official responsibilities with regards to emergency management. So really, what is emergency management? And you know, one of the things we just talked about, the, the weather events is certainly falls in that category, but they can range from any, you know, human caused or natural caused disaster you can think of. In the city, we'll have to, you know, certainly scale a response based on what type of incident we, what type of incident we have before us. Emergency management really creates a framework to help not just with the response, but to reduce vulnerabilities, threats and cope with, with disasters. And it is a, an essential role of local government. Really, you know, we coordinate with the county, but really the federal government is there as a backstop when, when local county and state resources are overwhelmed. It's really evolved to reflect our national values and emerging threats. But really the goal, as it says the bottom, is a safe, secure and resilient community. As I mentioned before, we work under what's called the National Response Framework. It really outlines the broad overview of emergency management throughout the country. And really one of the key components of that is the national preparedness goal. And really it's to look to participation from the whole community. So individuals, you know, we certainly want people to be prepared, businesses to be prepared and, and resilient and talk about recovery after a disaster. We certainly want to involve our community and faith based organizations. They are a key component of disaster response. So you know, we, we can't operate some of the things we do without organizations like the Red Cross. Certainly schools, we lean on them quite a bit and we want them to be involved as well as tribal governments. And here in Thurston County with our Emergency Management Council, the tribes are part of our emergency management framework. So really there's involvement at all levels of government. And this is a busy slide, but it really summarizes, summarizes the mission. And in the blue at the top, there are five mission areas that we focus on, which are prevention, protection, mitigation, response and recovery. Oftentimes, there's a real focus on response, but you know, it's the things oftentimes that happen before the planning before an emergency that helps facilitate that response and the recovery. So here are the five mission areas. And the thirty-two, what are called core capabilities that need to be addressed in our, in our planning. Here at the city, really the guiding document, as in any organization, is the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. And I'm going to touch a little bit more about that in, in a couple of slides. The city also has a standing emergency management committee made up of the directors, senior managers. And the goal is to coordinate city department responses and, and preparation work. And also to provide staffing for an emergency operations center if, if an event rose to, to that level. Oops, I'm sorry. City Emergency Management, you know, you mentioned in the previous presentation, an emergency coordination center. And that, I'm just putting EOC and ECC up here because in some, in some areas, the words are used interchangeably. So we've typically had an emergency operations here at the, at the city of Tom, Emergency Operations Center here at the city of Tom Water. But for instance, Thurston County uses the term Emergency Coordination Center. Our primary EOC is here at Station T one at the fire department. But it can be a physical or virtual location from where leaders meet and organize efforts to support an incident and on scene management activities. So one thing I want to mention though is not, you know, not every incident, there are different levels of activation. Not every incident is going to require a full activation of an emergency operations center. Every year we have, as in the previous presentation mentioned, windstorms, snowstorms. And we do have coordination among city departments. We're able to typically handle those events with resources that we have here within the city. But that is an emergency management activity when we have police, fire, communications, transportation, everyone working together to address an event. It's when things grow beyond our capability to handle internally and we begin to reach out beyond our normal mutual aid agreements that, that you, you rise to the next level. And that's where we have to address in the EOC sections such as operations, planning, logistics and finance. We need to document everything we're doing, particularly if we're, they were going to be seeking, you know, this is public assistance from FEMA. We, we need to be very careful about how we document everything that we've done. So the EOC, it's a, it's a coordination structure to collect, analyze, share information, support resources in the response, coordinates plans, determines needs into next, you know, into the next operational periods and provides coordination and policy direction. Now I mentioned our comprehensive emergency management plan. It's, it guides our response before, during and after a disaster. It's updated on a five year cycle and there was a one year extension. You know, I thought I could go pre, whole presentation, not say COVID, but here it is. One time it was a year extension due to COVID. Currently, the city, we are in the process of updating that plan. And we need to submit that to the state for review by the end of December. Once we get that back from the state, we will be briefing council on the update. And then, and subsequently asking council for approval or promulgation of the emergency management plan. And certainly here in the city, we have ongoing activities and training and, and exercises and the committee will be meeting, beginning to meet monthly again. So we can make sure we have all the training and some basic exercises. I put a note at the bottom because we work very closely with the city of Olympia in our planning efforts. Fortunately, they have had in the past staff who are emergency manager professionals in just that field and have, have worked on their plan updates and they willingly share that information with us here in Tom Water. So there's some of the staff there. I really want to thank for, for their assistance. And I just want to touch briefly, I, I know many of you have been to the executive seminars that the Emergency Management Council puts on. And this is just the Thurston County ECC, the Coordination Center. You'll recognize the area there and, and you know, this is where the county operates their, their EOC ECC efforts during an incident. The things we do in working with the county is we're active member of the Emergency Management Council. And that council then create, coordinates activities through, for the member jurisdictions in the county. That executive seminar is one of those activities. We coordinate public education and, and training through the county in September. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure if any of you are able to attend, but we had the Emergency Preparedness Expo for the county at Peter G Schmidt Elementary this year. And it was, it was really very well attended. And it's a good place to get a good overview of all of the organizations that help with emergency management in the county. We work with the county on hazard mitigation planning. Tom Water has an annex to the, the county plan. And that's under review right, right now. And certainly the staff and community development put a lot of work into that. And we also participate in the Disaster Recovery Council, which had, had stood up some work that was supported by TRPC. And there are high hopes to begin that disaster recovery work again here soon. And just touching on a few things here to wrap, wrap things up are just a, a broad overview of elected official responsibilities. Some of the basic training that I know some of you have taken, but if you have not taken it, the, there are online classes through FEMA's Emergency Management Institute. And and the first one is simply the introduction to the Incident Command System that we work under. And IS seven hundred is an introduction to the National Incident Management System. So this just gives a good framework for how we operate and structure our command systems in these emergency management organizations. General elected official responsibilities surround communication, policy decision and supportive rescue efforts. And more specifically here, and I believe this is is my last slide tonight. Primary responsibilities, take care of yourself and your family in an emergency first. And as the the previous speaker Christine mentioned, be prepared. You know, certainly look like PSE had some good preparedness resources. Thurston County Emergency Management also has some very good online resources available. And and certainly, you know, that training can be brought out to, you know, neighbor. When we have brought this training out to neighborhood groups in the community as well. As far as back to the responsibilities, there's a requirement to establish and maintain an organization for emergency management. And the city has recognized that in the in the municipal code. As an elected official, if there is a a large-scale emergency of some sort to maintain contact with the city administrator or designate, which which likely would be me as the fire chief or, you know, any of the command staff, just to touch base and and get an idea of the scale of what's going on. From there, then, the council members and the the mayor and the council members could be asked to act with regards to emergency pro- proclamations. In coordination, you know, with other jurisdictions as well, it mentions joint media conferences. Really, they're just, there would be coordination amongst the area cities, county up through through the state if needed. But you know, messaging is very important in in an emergency. So it would be working with our communications team and EOC manager to make sure that we're getting the right messaging out. And and then just to wrap things up, there could be some important policy decisions to be made in a large incident. And council members would be called on and consulted to help make those those kinds of decisions. So with that, we'll just wrap things up here and I will stop sharing. And if you have any questions, I'll certainly do my best to try to answer them.
I have a question, Chief Hurley.
Yes.
Um, yes, when was the last time we had to open our EOC, not for training?
So, boy, you know, we, as far as opening a full-scale EOC and staffing it, you know, I you know, I can't recall last time, I'd assume it would be our our earthquake event. I was more in operations and response at that timeframe. But certainly in a squally earthquake would have been a timeframe where that where the EOC would have been fully, fully stood up.
Okay, thank you. We hope we won't have one anytime soon, right? But we're prepared.
Right, I'll just emphasize that we have certainly had a lot of staff coordination on a lot of different events over the years, even you know, some of the civil unrest we've seen, you know, wind and snow emergencies, you know. We have had a lot of coordination, but as far as a full-scale activation, it's been some time.
Any other questions? I just wanted to make mention that several years ago, I'm trying to think, it was like two thousand nineteen, it might have been two thousand nineteen, where several of us, including Councilmember Dahlhoff, myself and some others spent four days in ocean shores with FEMA doing an enormous amount of work on tabletop peak, table ex tabletop exercises, discussing, and we ended up having a really great agreement coming out of that of how the structure will be. And our our scenario was a nine-point-oh Cascadia subduction earthquake. And then what do we do to recover from day thirty to nine months? So how do we get connected with FEMA? How do we get ahead of the line? And I think there was great work that came out of that particular exercise. And I believe that there's still a document that we have that is a working document to set up immediate structure of who is in charge of what. So I think that was that was so such an interesting process and 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 I really appreciate being able to participate in that.
Yeah, I'll just add that that was what kicked off the works surrounding the Disaster Recovery Council. And there was grant funding available, TRPC took the lead, Paul Brewster and his staff did a great job. So that document is out there and it's recognized that we have more work to do on that. But that was a good kickoff for particularly the recovery portion of the efforts.
And it was good to have so many FEMA personnel involved in that process, so. They got to know us. Any other questions or any questions? Great, it's a good reminder and I really appreciate it, Brian.
Yeah, thank you. And we'll we'll be back soon to talk more about the comprehensive plan.
Great. All right, next is the amendment to the local inter-local agreement with Olympia-Lacey Thurston County regarding creation of a public facility district modification to a second amendment, and I will turn it over to Lisa.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities District was actually formed back in June of two thousand and two. It was formed by an inter-local agreement between the three cities and Thurston County. It's been amended three times prior to this current proposal. And specifically, that Public Facilities District funded the Hands-on Children's Museum in Olympia. And it also funded the construction of the regional athletic complex in Lacey. In two thousand seventeen, the state legislature amended the authorizing statute allowing for public facility districts to extend the timeline for imposing the tax that's used to finance the facilities that are part of a a public facilities district. Originally, the timeline that was allowed was twenty-five years. And in two thousand seventeen, this amendment to the statute allowed that timeline to be forty years from when the tax was first collected. So this particular inter-local agreement, as it's proposed, would implement this change in the state law and extend the timeline of this inter-local agreement for the Hands-on Children's Rack essentially for an additional fifteen years. So the total would be forty years instead of twenty-five. Primarily, what that would allow is for the planned Phase Three at the Rack to be financed and completed and implemented over over that period of time. And it's important to note that this Public Facilities District is one that is actually funded by a return of a part of the state's portion of collective sales tax from within the region. So it's not, if if you were to choose not to do this, it's not like your sales tax rate would go down. This is a program that I believe the state was utilizing to encourage economic development in in communities by allowing for a portion of their sales tax to go back to a region for a specific purpose. So we're actually recommending that the this particular amendment to the inter-local agreement be placed on the consent calendar at the next council meeting.
Uh, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa, I don't know if you can answer this because it's, I think, before your time, which you just started this year. But is there a way to get some background for me and for us? You know, we, when we talk about regional projects, we always hear whose turn it is, right? So I've heard Olympia had a turn, Lacey had a turn, and I've heard Tomwater's next, right? So in these amendments and this amendment, I don't see like Tomwater's turn. I see it still being the projects for Olympia and Lacey, right? And I I'm not questioning that. I guess I'm trying to understand, when is it Tomwater's turn? And is that the discussion regarding a potential Public Facilities District Two for an indoor sports complex inclusive of a recreational aquatic facility? And would that be Tomwater's turn? So if we, you know, I mean, I'm totally in support of this. Would we have the support of those jurisdictions for Tomwater's turn with the Public Facilities District Two?
Yes. So there is about five different questions here, but I will I will try to answer all of them. I, so first, first and foremost, this particular inter-local agreement and this current Public Facilities District is very specific to those two facilities. So there isn't anything that we could do or not do with this particular inter-local agreement other than fund those facilities. When public facilities districts are first created, they're created based on specific projects. And they are, are, I believe, put to a vote of the people in the region to be, you know, to have that facility. So it's like, do you want us to build the Rack and the Hands-on Children's Museum? Answer is yes, inter-local agreement is signed. I believe I believe that's correct. Karen will correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure. Um, so so there isn't anything we could do with this one. The issue of whose turn it is, I've heard that as well. There is a current opportunity that was generated, that that is generated by virtue of some legislation that was passed this this last session. It was sponsored by Senator Hawkins out of the twelfth district, which is actually where I used to be. And so I'm I'm pretty familiar with what the impetus was there. And the Public Facilities District that is allowed to be created by that legislation is limited in scope to basically indoor fields or indoor sports facilities and aquatic centers. So absolutely, that is an option if there is a location where we want to collectively as a region cite either indoor recreation facilities or an aquatic center or both. So, yes, that could be, that could be Tomwater's turn. And I cannot speak for either of my, you know, the other jurisdictions. You as elected officials may even know more than I, the appetite of the elected officials. What I will say is, again, if a public facilities district is to be implemented in the region, it would have to be for a specific project, so we have to develop the project, cite it, you know, feasibility, cost it, do a lot of work. And then we would have to put that to the voters and the voters would have to agree. I believe it's a simple majority, but I will correct myself if I'm not, if that's not right. And then, you know, and and in that case, it would be an additional, as I understand the current legislation, the new legislation, that would be an actual new additional sales tax that would be implemented. So it wouldn't be the same as this Public Facilities District where it's a it's a portion of the state's money coming back. And I will also correct that if I'm wrong, but I do believe that is the case. So I hope that answered most of your questions.
That's perfect. Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, can I chime in, Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Jefferson, you had a question?
Yes, I have to a hundred percent agree with Councilmember Dahlhoff. Um, as far as the indoor sports complex and the aquatic center, we know that there's a need because Chuck Denny gave us some briefing on that. So I would definitely like to see that. And that was a great response, Lisa. Thank you.
Great. Any, any other questions? Wow, we're just going right through the agenda.
Don't jinx it, Mayor.
I know it. It's just now up to me and Lisa, so there we go. All right, so I'll let Lisa go first and we will be doing Mayor-City Administrator Report.
Okay, just a couple of real quick things. I just wanted to let you all know, in case you hear or see that we are out and about. We are Austin Ramirez, myself and Kelsey Holtz with Strategies three sixty have been meeting with our legislators, beginning to advocate for our legislative agenda that we've that we've brought before the council. In particular, we're talking about the Habitat Conservation Plan and our request for some seed money to get us started on being able to acquire and develop mitigation land. We also talk a little bit about transportation with them, the E Street Connection, some of those larger projects that take so long to fund. But we like to outline our priorities for the different legislators. So we've met with Representative Doleo, Representative Bateman, Senator Hunt. And we actually met this just today with the governor's budget writing staff. So beginning to have important conversations. And those will continue into the session. And then I just did, I did want to let you know that there are some threads that we are pulling, attempting to pull with regard to brewery redevelopment. Nothing solid at this point. We will continue to come to you with updates as we have, as we have them. But generally, what I would say is I wanted to draw your attention to the article from Department of Ecology. They have reached a settlement with the current property owner regarding the spill that happened in February of two thousand nineteen. If you need a copy of that press release, I'm happy to forward it to you. Just send me an email and I can get that to you. There are lots of preliminary conversations around, you know, this this option of potentially creating a public facilities district and how that might relate to brewery re- brewery redevelopment. But the first priority from our perspective right now at the staff level is we need to understand environmental contamination and the extent of it. Where is it? What is it? How how can it best be cleaned up? How expensive is it going to be to clean it up? Because anything that happens moving forward on the brewery property, whether it is a city-sponsored project, whether it is a regional project, whether it's a private project, we absolutely have to know that. So we are focusing on trying to get Phase One and Phase Two environmental assessments done on the property. We're going to use the EPA money, the five hundred thousand dollar grant to help us with that on the brewery site. So we are going to be very, very soon issuing a request for qualifications for consultant consulting firm to help us both with that grant as well as the the grant on that we received from Department of Ecology to do similar work on the Washington State DOT property that's on Capitol Boulevard near Trosser. And that's all I have unless there are any questions.
Any questions? Great, great. So I just wanted to make mention that we have two new Tomwater Police Officers as of today because they graduated from the academy today. So this is really exciting news. This is sorry, I hit my button. This is quite a process to get officers through the, you know, hired through the academy and all of that. So they still have a little bit further to go. But there's there are two of them and and I had the honor of meeting them earlier this year. The first one's name is Jack Buttermer and he was born in Mongolia. And he was raised in Denver, Colorado. Before joining the police department, he served in the army for eight years and he currently lives in Lacey, so he's very close. So he enjoys playing, playing and coaching volleyball. He was actually the Black Hills Junior Varsity Coach in two thousand twenty-two. So that's really exciting that he's very much dedicated to our community. The other officer that graduated today was Matthew Mash Mashia. And he was born in Ethiopia. And he also, he was raised in Los Angeles, California area, and he was also spent eight years in the army. So he lives in Olympia and he always works to maintain physical activity and spending time with his family, which includes a young son and daughter. So both of these individuals have families and are very committed to our community and we're very excited to have them. So I just really appreciate it. And and so in about four months, four to six months, they will be probably through their field training program and able to do solo patrols in our community. So I really look forward to adding those additional staff to our police department. So that is all I have. Did anybody have any questions? All right, we're doing good. We're less than an hour into this meeting and we're going to be adjourned. So I want to wish everyone a great evening and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.